Well, good evening everyone and welcome. I'm not the most technologically adept person, but tonight we are sending this particular meeting, and I guess video is an old word, but what word can I use? I'm going to look at the director here. We're simulcasting down to CNC, livestream. It'll be on the world wide web apparently will be ever forged in the memories of people from now until the end of time. Tonight, just want to take the opportunity to give you an update. I'm very pleased. Where did Mark go? Okay. Mark Hamm is here, and I'm very pleased to have Mark here. Mark is going to give us an update on what's going on from a wildfire perspective, and he presented two nights ago and did an unbelievable job by phone under some difficult circumstances, so I'm glad to have him here. Just going to go around the bottom part of the room here and introduce folks. We've got Solicitor General of BC, and that's Mike Morris, MLA for Prince George McKenzie, MP Todd Doherty. We have Al Richmond, Chair of the Caribou Regional District. We have Mitch Campsill, who's the Mayor of Hundred Mile House. John, who is the Assistant Chair of the Caribou Regional District. Steve Raper is here from Northern Health, going to give us an update. So we're going to get a number of updates this evening on various things, and I think it's important to hear from these folks who are on the ground, and I'll use Steve Raper as an example with Northern Health and the services that are provided by our Northern Health Authority Agency at CNC. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Lynn Hall, the Mayor of the City of Prince George, and I just want to thank the folks that are here this evening from our EOC team, and I need to start with our Director Kathleen Soltes, who's there. We have my colleague on council, Councilor Gillian Merrick is with us this evening. I want to go over here. We have Bill McCloskey, who's in charge of our IT department. Renee McCloskey, who is a big part of the Fraser Fort, Georgia Regional District. Let me just scan the room. Rob Whitwam, I saw Rob come in. Rob is on our EOC team up top. Brad Beckett is on our EOC team. So we are well represented, and I will say right now, if you have any questions, please don't feel that you can't ask any one of these folks. We're also going to take questions from CNC, and I'm hoping that I'll be able to connect by cellphone. If not, some of the plan, I think, Al, was to go down to CNC later on this evening and have a conversation with those folks as well. So with that, I think what I would like to do is we'll get Mark. Is Mark back? No, okay. You know, I'm going to put Steve Raper on the spot. Steve, come on up. Steve is the Communications Director for the Northern Health Authority here in Prince George, and Steve will give you a bit of an update on NHA dealings. Thanks, Steve.
All right. I'll keep my comments brief, but there's some information we want people to be aware of, certainly available for questions right after this, but certainly one-on-one after this presentation. I'll stick around and make sure that anybody that has any questions, we can answer them. So we've been working with the city and the province in terms of accommodating many of the healthcare needs as people have moved from the communities in the Caribou into Prince George. We have about 180 people throughout our facilities, and they range from acute care, people that have gone to the hospital, to complex care, right into assisted living. We're housing them in a number of our facilities around the community, including UH NBC and including the university residence where we've put, or we're cohorting a number of assisted living clients. We've brought the services to those clients, so we've developed some services that include physician support to make sure that the people are getting the, hopefully, the support that they need where they're situated, no matter what the range of their complex care is. Also important to note, and this is a really key piece, is we have a health service management clinic, health services available right at CNC. So we've opened a clinic up in the CNC clinic space. That'll be staffed 24 hours a day with a registered nurse, and then during the day with physicians and other supports as well for mental health and addictions. Some of the lab, there'll be some mobile lab service, mobile pharmacy, things of that nature, so that we're trying to bring those services to where people are going to need the most. And of course, any of the evacuees, if you're looking for supports or medical health services, please go to CNC because those services are available as well. In addition to that, the Natchaco Medical Clinic, the Division of Family Practice, has extended those hours to nine o'clock. So from one o'clock to nine o'clock, Monday to Friday, and nine to seven, 10 to seven, Saturday and Sunday. And the Salveo Medical Clinic's open during the day at the Real Canadian Superstore. So there are a number of clinics also available that if you need healthcare, you can certainly go to those in CNC as well, where we're providing specific services to the evacuees. So those services are available, and there are services available up and on site. And in addition to that, the City of Prince George has, there's a shuttle service available every half hour between the Northern Sports Center and the college. So if you are up here, there is a shuttle service at the Northern Sports Center that you can take to CNC if you're looking to get some of your medical health needs taken care of. So I just wanted to reiterate that we're here working with the city. We're certainly, the hospital's functioning, and if there are emergency situations, please, it is available, but if you need primary healthcare or initial services, use some of those services that I've just mentioned to provide the care that you need and make sure we don't overwhelm the hospital emergency for the emergencies that it's there for. Other than that, if there are any questions, I'll certainly take a few now, and then I'll turn it over to Lynn and be available for questions at the end.
And if you would like one-on-one, certainly at the end, that's an opportunity for you. I need to, before I call up Minister Morris, is I want to recognize Jim Martin, the CEO of Fraser Fort, Georgia Regional District. Welcome, Jim. Good to have you here. Minister Morris, come on up. And as Mike is coming up, I want to extend Minister Bond's regret. She's down at the coast and couldn't be here this evening, but I also want to thank Minister Bond today for the work she and Minister Stone did on registration processing and voucher processing, and I want to thank them for the work. It's made things much easier for us and much more streamlined.
Thanks, Lynn, and thanks, everybody, for coming. Donna Barnett, MLA for Williams Lake Hundred Mile House as well, Caribou North, extends her thoughts and best wishes to everybody that's affected by the closures and the evacuations that we've seen here. And I guess one of the messages that I want to just keep reiterating is, you know, stay calm. There's a whole pile of people in the province of British Columbia that are trying to do their very best to mitigate the situation, to keep the fires down, to get them under control, to get them out eventually. I've just signed a letter this afternoon authorizing the RCMP in BC to bring in more resources from outer province to make sure that your communities are safe, the communities that you've had to evacuate, your homes and whatnot. So we want to make sure that we're keeping them as safe as possible. I know there's been some issues of looting and break-in entering. We're very cognizant of that, and we put a few of those bad actors in jail. I've got two sons in the forest, and one of them has been taken down to Williams Lake, and he's spending the next week or so down in Williams Lake. He's part of the Combined Forces Special Enforcement Unit. He's been working in Williams Lake extensively over the last couple of years, dealing with some of the gang issues down there. He knows the bad guys well. His team knows the bad guys well, and he's, so I think they're going to be quite effective here over the next few days, making sure that these guys don't surface and cause any harm there. So all in all, you know, the best advice I can give as Public Safety Minister, at least for the next couple of days, is listen to what the folks have to say in Emergency Management BC. They are the experts. They know what's going on. Listen to the police force that's in the area. Listen to the experts, because that's the only thing that's going to keep us from getting into situations where we could have loss of life. We want to, if there are evacuations like we've seen, and particularly Williams Lake is on evacuation alert as other communities, just make sure that you listen to the instructions very carefully, and everybody will get out safe and sound. That leaves the people that are remaining in the communities in Williams Lake and the surrounding areas to do their very best to make sure that the structures don't get damaged in the fire as well. Human life, human safety is our first concern, structures are the second, and everybody's working flat out on that. So a few days ago, I signed an authorization to bring in 40 resources from Alberta. Today, I signed another letter, like I said, authorizing the RCMP to bring in more from wherever, whatever province has got members available to come in here. So if we need another 40, 50, 100, whatever we're going to get, we will have them here, and we'll make sure they're on the ground and keep everybody safe. So I will be around if anybody's got any questions at the end here. I'll be more than happy to answer them. Thanks, Lynn.
Great. Thanks very much, Mike. And I think I'm going to ask Mark to come up now, and, or Al, did you want to come up? Are we?
I think so.
I think so. So I'll call Mark up, and I don't want to put too much pressure on Mark, but I did say to him earlier this afternoon that he'd done a great job at our evening session, our town hall meeting about a day and a half ago, or whatever it was. So there's a little bit of pressure. Thanks, Mark. Appreciate having you here. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. What I'd like to do is, my name, sorry, my name is Mark Hamm. I'm Deputy Fire Center Manager with Caribou Fire Center in Williams Lake. And I've come up here with my colleague Karen Powell, just to hopefully give you a little bit of background on what happened on the 7th of July, how we got to this place, and what we're looking at now in terms of wildfire status and what we're looking at in the future. Yeah, so I've got some slides here. I don't have a, I don't have a formal PowerPoint presentation, just didn't have enough time to put it together, but I did just want to give you a little bit of background. So this slide shows what wildfire service calls the buildup index, and it's one of several fire weather indices we use to determine what the fire danger is. So when you see those signs in British Columbia that show the fire danger rating as low, moderate, high, or extreme, it comes from information, it's come from a combination of these indices. And the buildup index is actually a combination of the drought code and the duff moisture code. The drought code is a measure of the dryness of the larger forest fuels. So the logs, the saplings, the dry timber that you see lying in the forest, the heavy wood. And the duff moisture code is a measure of the moisture levels in the fine fuels on the forest floor. And those two codes together combine into what we call a buildup index, which is an indication of the dryness of the fuels in the forest. So if we look at this slide, you can see that for Caribou, in, for example, July 2010, July 10th, 2010, if you're from Williams Lake or the Caribou, you probably remember 2010 is a very bad year for fires. We had a lightning storm on the 27th of July, and we were dealing with very large fires in the Chilcotin and in Quinell, down by Dog Creek, for most of the rest of that summer. And in that situation, in 2010, we had a buildup index somewhere around 75, if you see the red bar on the graph there. And if we look at that and compare it to what we're facing now in 2017, we have a buildup index that's over twice that high. So we're dealing with, think about 2010, and think about how dry it was then, and realize that we're dealing with an even worse situation now. So that was one. And then I just wanted to show you this map of the lightning that we experienced on the 7th of July. This was a Friday afternoon. These strikes happened probably between 2:30 and 4:30, 5 o'clock. We weren't, didn't have lightning predicted for, at least not to that extent, on the Friday. You can see out by Charlotte Lake, Tatla, north to the Itchesal Gaches were really hit hard, and right around Williams Lake was hit particularly hard. We were already dealing with a fire, a large fire down in Hundred Mile at that time. I don't know exactly how many lightning strikes this is, but there were a lot of them, and they did not come with a lot of rain. And some of them struck right around the airport in Williams Lake. So I've got some photos that we took, or that were taken just after that. So here's, yeah. It's not a very good picture, but let me see if I can just make this bigger. So that's looking east or west on the runway. You can see a skimmer plane there in the end of a helicopter. There's the Central Mountain Air Flight on Friday afternoon, and this happened around 4 o'clock. We were all kind of getting ready to go home. We heard the boom crash, and in about, in about an hour, we were seeing the columns coming up. And about 6 o'clock, this last picture was taken. And that's looking across the runway from the fire center itself, at the trees that used to be green on the other side of the runway. Flames were going up very high, and at one point, sometime around this time, we had flames at the west end of the fire center. We had to evacuate for about an hour and put up sprinklers around it. So what I'm, I'm belaboring this a little bit, I guess, in order to try and impress upon you that it is really dry out there. The alerts and the orders are put on for good reason, we feel, and it continues to be really dry out there. Any lightning will give us trouble. Any fires in the bush will give us trouble. So that said, I'd like to just look at, Karen and I want to talk about the, try and give you an update as to what the situation is right now. There we are. So there's the fire center as a whole. Ordinarily, what we do is we have four zones, the Quinell Zone, the kind of the strip in the middle, which is the Caribou-Chilcotin Zone, and the Hundred Mile Zone to the southeast. Because of the extent of the fires, we've had to reorganize ourselves, and we've restructured into command areas. So Quinell is its own area of command, the eastern part of Williams Lake, up to and including the White Lake Fire on the west side of the river in Williams Lake is its own command area, and Hundred Mile is its own command area. So those are operating at arms-length from the fire center, just because they have significant workload and enough work to justify a separate structure. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Williams Lake Horsefly Zone, or Command Area, and the Chilcotin Command Area. Karen will talk about Quinell, and then we'll talk a little bit about the fires in Hundred Mile. So I will just grab my summary. The Hundred and Fifty Mile House Fire, which is, well, it's northwest of Hundred and Fifty Mile. It's about 2,600 hectares, which is not much different from the update that we had on the night before last. Some good news on it, though, is we had a really good burn last night on it. And what we do is, what we'll try and do is we'll put a guard around the fire and wet down the fuels outside of it, and then we'll burn off the fuels between the guard and the rest of the fire, so that the fire can't give us problem when it approaches the guard. So we burned off, had a good, successful burn yesterday, and it's about 50% contained now. Resources, we have 76 firefighters on it, 22 pieces of equipment, lots of air support. Our objectives on that fire are, of course, life and property, hence the evacuation order over Fox Mountain, et cetera, utilities, and keeping the highway open. Yeah, like I say, yesterday's burnout was successful, and we got lots of calls from members of the community just because of the column of smoke, but this was a good column of smoke. And the Hundred and Fifty Mile Fire Department, sugarcane, both been really helpful, continuing, they're continuing to give us a lot of help with dealing with that fire. The Wildwood Fire is the one that I was just talking about that threatened the fire center building itself. It's about 2,500 hectares, probably about 40% contained. We've got 80 firefighters on that one, 17 pieces of equipment. We're continuing to mop up along a control line on the south side of that fire and build control lines and prepare for burnout, burning off operations, just like the ones that happened yesterday at the 50. There's the Hawks Creek Fire, which is to the north of the airport, probably about 100 hectares, 25% contained, 37 firefighters, 7 pieces of equipment, similar objectives. We're really focusing on trying to keep Highway 97 open so that we can maintain the infrastructure. The Soda Creek Fire, and that's the one that was burning just on the west side of the highway, threatening at one point the CN rail trestle. The rail trestle is no longer in any danger, or no significant danger. That fire's about 100 hectares. We haven't got any containment on it yet. Last time we updated, we had a small crew on it. Now we've got some help from Ontario, and we've got a 21-person crew of trained firefighters on it. In addition, we have CN crews, CN rail crews, and a local rancher helping us out with that The Spoken Lake Fire, it's called the Spoken Lake Fire, but it really kind of stretches from Spoken up to Myosene, is about 460 hectares. We've had really good success on that in the last few days. It's about 75% contained, 43 firefighters, 12 pieces of equipment, air support, similar objectives on that one, as to the others. And then there's the White Lake Fire, which is of particular interest. That's, White Lake is a little bit south of Till Lake, and it's just on the west side of the Fraser River. So this is the fire that we face the most imminent peril from for Williams Lake, if the winds carried on from the west and pushed the fire across the river. It's about 3,800 hectares in size, but we've made good progress. It's about 60% contained now. On that, we have another Ontario crew of 21 firefighters, 7 pieces of equipment, and they're working around the clock. They work all night on shifts, air support, and we're continuing to work at enforcing the control lines on that one. And then Big Lake, this last, last time we did the update, this was, we just talked about the one Big Lake complex, and we've broken that down now into actually four smaller fires. So we've got one located on the UBC Research Forest. It's about 40 hectares, about, almost half, half-contained, 45% contained, 21 firefighters, so there's a unit crew on that, equipment and air support. And they're working to, similarly, they're putting, trying to put a guard around it, and then they'll burn off from the guard to control the fire. For all four of these fires, an incident command post's been set up at the Big Lake Fire Department, and we're getting lots of help and support from them, and we really appreciate it. The second fire in that Big Lake group is the Gavin Lake Fire, about 40 hectares. That's about 25% contained. Got a dozen firefighters on that, plus equipment. The Big Lake Forest Service Road Fire is about 40 hectares. It's 50% contained, similar amount. We've got 22 firefighters on that, as well as equipment. And the Big Lake Fire, 40 hectares, 25% contained, and 22 firefighters on that one. So all four of those, we're making reasonably good progress on. And then the other ones I could talk about are the ones in the Chilcotin, but maybe I'll just stop at this point and see if there's any questions about, I don't know if we're taking questions at the end, or if you want to stop and take questions now.
Mark, why don't we do it now?
Okay. Sure. Okay. Any questions on the fires around Williams Lake and just east of Williams Lake?
My question is, in terms of planning, like I figure out what we do for the next few days, or the next week, what is the prognosis? How long is the alert? I know you can't say how long it's going to be maintained, but in terms of planning, how long should I tell manager of my hotel that I'd like to be here?
That's really hard to say. In terms of, I actually asked this question of the incident management team that's looking after the Hundred Mile Fire that we'll talk about in a bit, because they've had some good success on that, too, as to when that alert, or sorry, the order over Hundred Mile would be lifted. And I was told the earliest that that would be lifted would be at least a week. So for the orders around Williams Lake, without more specific information, I would say we had at least a week to go on those, when we're talking about the alert over Williams Lake. And I just want to be clear, the orders are around Williams Lake in specific areas, they're not over Williams Lake. Over Williams Lake itself, there's an alert, and that's likely to be there for several weeks. We're not, because of the issues with the dryness in the forest, that buildup index, and the weather is not, there's no significant precipitation projected within seven to 10 days, even if we get a good dump of rain, that'll only affect it temporarily. We have a really dry forest that we're going to have to live with all summer. So I think we're going to be on alert for a long time.
Mark, there's a gentleman, I think, right here in the white shirt. Does he, zero, back there?
It's just north of Williams Lake, I see several zero hectares, I assume. I'm just wondering what that's, what that means?
Yeah, so this is, this is an overview map, and it will, it's a couple of days old, and what it will be showing is where we know there's a fire, but we don't have a size on it yet. So it's, it's an unknown size, is what it means.
You pointed out that it's really, really dry this year.
What?
I was wondering if you're, if you did anything different this year to prepare, given that it was as dry as your charts indicate it?
Well, we brought the tankers in a little bit early this year, about a week early at the end of April. We had our usual preparations in terms of unit crews. We got four unit crews in the Caribou Fire Center, so that's 80 firefighters. And for initial attack, we've got 12 initial attack crews based out of Williams Lake. And depending on, there's, the forest is dry, but depending on what weather we get, we might get a lot of fires, we might not get many. This is a really unprecedented event, when we get, to have so many fires all at once, we were just overwhelmed. So I, and the whole other areas in the province, we're in a similar situation. So we were as prepared as we could have been, I think.
Okay, and then let's say you get a handle on all the fires that are going on right now, whether that's two weeks from now, or a month from now, or whenever that is. Are you then planning to take extra steps to prevent further fires from happening, whether that's controlled burns or anything like that?
Well, if we have a lightning storm, it's pretty tough to, because we don't know where the lightning's going to hit, to take preventative measures against that. Within the fires that we have now, we will, one of our objectives will be to remove all the fuel, unburnt fuel that's in there, so that they don't pose a further risk. Down the road, we have a fire management plan, a landscape fire management plan that incorporates fuel management treatments around communities, fuel breaks in the forest. We're starting to begin some work on that this year, and we'll certainly carry on with it, and I think we'll probably see a lot of, a lot more support for that kind of work after a season like this.
Okay, last question. You said this is a very unusual year. Are you expecting more years like this going forward?
Well, if the climate is changing, as scientists tell us it is, then I would expect we will see more years like this in the future, yeah.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. One relates to the alert order in Williams Lake, which will go on for a long time. What is the relationship between that and the road closure? Do you expect the road closure to be possible or definite as long as the alert is on, or is that more of a temporary measure? And, you know, go ahead.
Yeah, that's really, probably not something I can really speak to. What the wildfire service does is we'll, we'll look after fire detection and suppression, fire management, to fuel, manage fuels to prevent fires or reduce their severity. But in terms of setting alerts and setting orders, that's actually up to the Emergency Operations Center in Williams Lake, and the highways, the highways are not under our control either. What we will do is, is make recommendations to the EOC, or the Emergency Operations Center, saying that saying that, look, this fire behavior is causing us real concern, and we recommend an alert or an order, but we don't actually have any power to enact one. In terms of the highways, again, we're just a recommending agency. So we'll say the Highway 24, for example, is unsafe to travel right now. We recommend that it be closed, but the actual closure of the highway is not up to us.
Thanks. My second question has to do with the buildup index and dryness and predictability of fires in the future. Is there a particular mix of dead trees and live trees that is most conducive to a higher buildup index? Or, I mean, you mentioned like pine needles on the forest floor. That would suggest that living or recently dead trees might be more flammable than the dead trees, although the dead trees are obviously perfect fuel once a fire gets going. But I'm just wondering if you could comment on that?
As to whether there's a, well, there's, different fuel types have different fire behavior associated with them. So a lodgepole pine fuel type will have a fire behavior different from, for example, what you'd find in the wet belt out in Horseflyer likely, where you have cedar and hemlock and a lot more material on the forest floor. But I'm not really a fire scientist, so I don't know if I should comment much more on that.
When the evacuation orders are lifted, whenever that might be, how are we going to be notified? Like, we're sitting here in Prince George, and how do we know what's happening down in Williams Lake? And when the orders are lifted?
Again, that's evacuation orders and alerts, that's really, that's not our job, the Wildfire Service. That's, and I think Al Richmond's going to talk about that.
So as far as containment goes, when you say containment, does that not necessarily mean under control now? Or does that mean, like, you've got barriers around the fires? What does containment actually mean?
Contain means that there's a guard around the fire. The next step up from containment is under control, which is where we want to get to. So that's the guards around it, and the fuel within the fire has been reduced satisfactorily.
So I think we'll take one more question, and then let Mark go on with the rest of his presentation. Then we can come back to Mark at the end.
Hi there. My question is, for those of us that may have gotten our families to safety up here and whatnot, but have some resources to contribute to the help down there, is there any way for us to get back, to be involved?
If, what we, we've got registered equipment that we're committing to these fires, and we've got trained firefighters that we're putting on them as well. Some of them work directly for the BC Wildfire Service, and some of them are contracted. So, for example, different First Nations communities will have contract crews of five people that we've inspected, and they've been trained. We're ready to put those on the fire. Where we're not ready to go just yet is to hire emergency firefighters and put them on the fire. And the reason fires, we're getting help from other, out of province, from Ontario. There's a big camp right now up at the Williams Lake Airport with all kinds of people from Alberta and Ontario there. They're all trained, similar situation in Quinell. The reason that we don't want to go to the emergency firefighters yet is because of safety. We don't want to see anybody get hurt or killed on the fire line.
Well, yeah, I don't know. I've been doing forestry for a number of years and have experience. But yeah, it's just, I know out in the west, there's some places that are not even being addressed, obviously, and they're calling for resources out there and extra hands. So just feel kind of helpless in not being able to contribute at all when we do have the expertise to help out.
Yeah. Yeah, and honestly, there are, although I'm saying that we don't hire emergency firefighters, and we always have professional people on these fires. In this case, because we've got so many fires, and they happen so quickly, people just did what they felt they had to do. We've got ranchers fighting fires. We've got First Nations band members fighting fires on reserve. We've got lots of industry people that just saw the fire happen, knew we weren't going to be able to get to it. They got their equipment out there, and we're dealing with it. That's not how it's supposed to happen, though. Okay, I'll... So I'll just move to the Chilcotin, and I'll just bring that map up. So the Chilcotin. We've got, I had the opportunity actually to fly out there day before yesterday to Anaheim. And it was a really smoky day, couldn't see much more than a half mile or a mile in front of us. But there's some huge fires out there. The one that is happening right around Hansville is about 10,000 hectares in size. And it's, I think we talked about this last time, but it's not a solid, a solid fire where everything in it is being burned. But it's spot fires all through an area of about 10,000 hectares. We're making some progress on that fire. We have equipment and crews out there. I saw crews from Ascotum, from Alkali Lake, working out there with equipment, and they were burning off. So they were, they had a guard established on the east flank of the fire, the one that is closest to Williams Lake. And they were burning off on that to reduce the fuels right adjacent to that guard. The Clean-A-Clean complex, which is in the Clean-A-Cleaning River, is, I don't have a size on here, but I believe it's about 3,000 hectares in size. Don't know much more than that about it. We're just getting set up. We're going to have a crew, a unit crew, or an incident management team from Alberta has arrived, and they're being set up in the Chilcotin, the old office of the Chilcotin Forest District out there. So they'll be addressing the Clean-A-Clean and the Hansville fires. And what we talked about last time, we called it the Macca Complex, which didn't really make sense to me. And now we're calling it the Tautree Complex, which is a little better, I think, because, I mean, it's near Tautree Lake, Tautree and Rosita Lakes. That size is about 11,000 hectares. So that's across the river northwest of Williams Lake. And we're just getting started on that one. And then the last one I wanted to mention was the Chesapeake Complex, another very large fire near Chilcotin Lake and going north along the Chilcotin River. So that's up from Punsey, northwest of Punsey. So some very large fires out there that unfortunately we have just not, because we were, our capacity was exceeded on the first day. We just haven't been able to get out. Anaheim Reserve, when I was out there, the fire there was to the north and east of the community. Not immediately threatening it, but it was very, very smoky there. Very bad for anybody with respiratory problems. And that's it for the Chilcotin. Any questions on Chilcotin fires?
So we have some questions from CNC. And what I thought, Karen, if you would like to come up and talk a little bit about your particular area, and then we'll go to CNC. They're going to text councillor Merrick the questions, and we'll go from there.
So I just wanted to give an update on the fires in the Quinell Resource District. And to start off, I just want to mention that the fires that are within the Highway 97 corridor between Quinell and Williams Lake, the fire guards are being completed all the way on the fires that are being actioned right now. So east of the Fraser River on the corridor there, they're being actioned by industry. So we have West Fraser Mills actioning some of the fires out there, and they've made some really good progress out there. And we do have BC Wildfire Service staff on those fires right now. For fires west of the Fraser River corridor, they were flying the fires today, and they were assessing them for size and also for, to put together a plan and look at resource requirements. So I'm going to start off with the West Fraser Road Complex, which is on the west side of Highway 97. It's about six kilometers southwest of Australian and 30 kilometers south of Quinell. That one's estimated at 120 hectares. Right now, we have 44 personnel on that fire with five pieces of heavy equipment. And the objective for that one is to continue to protect the critical infrastructure there. We also have the Green Mountain Fire, which was formerly called the Dragon Mountain Fire, but we wanted to update the name so there was no confusion. It was actually on the Green Mountain. It's just west of Dragon Mountain, and it's about 25 kilometers southeast of Quinell. That one is currently estimated at 520 hectares. There's seven personnel on that one with 11 pieces of heavy equipment, and there is a fire camp in place for that. So they want to complete the fire guard on that and also protect the critical infrastructure on Dragon Mountain and around that area. So right now, the estimate is that there's been guard established on about 80% on that fire. We have a couple of fires. One's considered the Castle Rock-Twan Lake North area. That one's about 45 kilometers northwest of Williams Lake. It's estimated at 1,600 hectares and is currently 5% contained. Again, the objective is to protect the critical infrastructure on that, and we have heavy equipment working on that one day and night. There's then the Castle Rock-Twan Lake South Fire. Again, that one's about 45 kilometers northwest of Williams Lake. That one is estimated at 2,200 hect, or sorry, 2,200 hectares. And we've got seven pieces of heavy equipment on that fire as well. Then we have a fire four kilometers north of Bezico River, and it's approximately 110 kilometers west of Quinell. The estimate size on that one is 1,700 hectares, and that's the only update I have on that one right now. Another fire is five kilometers north of Bishop's Bluff, so that's 130 kilometers west of Quinell. That one's estimated at 430 hectares, and we have five pieces of equipment on that fire. And that's being actioned by the Nasco Logging Company. Another fire, west side of Cluscoyle Park. It's approximately 110 kilometers northwest of Quinell, and it's estimated at 460 hectares. And the list continues. We have another fire on the Bezico 3,900 Road, which is 100 kilometers west of Quinell. That one's estimated at 600 hectares, and there's no other update on that one at this time. There's a fire at the Cottonwood House, approximately 43 kilometers east of Quinell, and that one's estimated at 24 hectares. That one, West Fraser Industry, West Fraser Mills has got a team working on site for that one. And the last one I have is a fire, again, in the Bezico area on the 3,900 Road, and that one is estimated at 3,400 hectares. Again, don't have an update on resources on that fire at this time. So that's all I have for Quinell. Is there any questions on the Quinell area?
Great, thanks very much, Karen. And we're just working on getting questions from CNC. I think what I'll do now is go to Al Richmond, who's the Chair of the Caribou Regional District, and up Tim P. Doherty. And then to wrap it up this evening, we'll have the mayor of 100 Mile House, Mayor Council. Al?
Thanks very much, Lynn. And I'd like to thank Prince George and the communities in the Fraser Fort George Regional District, and the volunteers of Prince George for helping us out during this time of need, because clearly, we really needed their help. And I would round the applause to those folks, because they did a great job. So I've talked to, I know some of you want to know about your homes, and I'm going to tell you about your homes. But I would like to emphasize what Mark and Karen have been trying to tell you. When I walked in here, I would have said I have, we have 17 orders in the Caribou Regional District, and we had eight alerts. At 8:16, I signed another order for the Hansville area. And due to tactical evacuations, we now have 18 orders. What a tactical evacuation means is that someone got no notice. A policeman knocks on his door and says, "Get out." That's not what we like to do. These fires are unpredictable. No one's keeping you out of your home because they want to do it. No one's issued an order or an alert because it's fun. It's serious business. No one signs a state of emergency without thinking about it, because the powers that that gives people are incredible. It's a difficult time for everybody. We've got volunteers throughout our communities who've been forced out of their homes. They're trying to help people in the SSs that are working in our EOCs. Some of our employees have left the Caribou because of fires, and so we're struggling to meet those demands. So when you think you're being kept out of your home, and you'll be disenfranchised, the people that have the power to do that don't take it lightly. It's a very difficult time for us. So for those of you who live at the 108, or those who live at 150 Mile, if you didn't get a call from me today, then your house is fine. I spoke to eight people. I told six people they lost their homes. I told one fellow he lost his shop, and I told another fellow he lost his shed. I don't like making those calls. They're hard. But we've been very fortunate so far. If you're from 103 Mile House, we've assigned a manager to try and get the inventory to know what structures we've lost. Basically, that's what we can see, virtually none. But there may be one to the east, but we're not sure. We also have a lot of damage in the 105 area further out, Able Lake Road and Lily Pad Lake Road. But they're rural properties. The fire is too dangerous, as we were just talking about, the volatility of the fire, for us to go in and do an accurate inventory. But when the fire department came in, they told me that one place they put a sprinkler up, the fire passed through, and the structure was still there. So we have to go in inventory. We have to check the address. We have to check the legal owners, and then we will contact them. So in the Caribou Regional District in 2010, and we talked about fires, we had 29,000 square kilometers of area under evacuation alert or order. Today, we have, and I haven't got the figures from the order I just signed 45 minutes ago, but we had just shy of 11,000 square kilometers under alert or order. And while that's smaller, the difference is it's attacking urban interfaces. It's putting people at jeopardy. This fire, these fires, the ones around Williams Lake, the ones around 100 Mile House, are impacting over 34,000 people. So while you're inconvenienced, you're safe, and that's our goal. So while you're inconvenienced, you're safe and that's our goal. In Williams Lake, and I want to say on behalf of Mayor Cobb, that he's with his community tonight because he doesn't know what's happening and he wants to be there if something does happen. We've had a couple of days of good time, of good days with the fire folks, with the winds that have cooperated and Mother Nature has agreed to let us fight the fire. It's not something I do, it's something these folks do. We hope for more good days. We're very concerned about the weekend, about potential lightning and wind. So I'll take questions. We asked a little bit about how fast the fire moves. One of the homes at the 108 that was destroyed, the fire department actually got there before the house was on fire, but the intensity of the fire with two fire trucks and all the firemen drove them out of the driveway. They couldn't fight the fire. It was that hot. They had to retreat. So in mop-up efforts at the 108 in particular, and I'll speak to that because I was in there yesterday and today again, or yesterday rather, you have forestry crews from these people. You have fire departments from Mackenzie. You have the 108 Fire Department. You have sprinkler systems up and down roads where the face is going to come in. And where it jumped the road, you see trees burn, but no houses burned. So you can rest assured that the community's being looked after and there's people there seven by 24. Someone asked about going back in a week. The power's been turned on, back on to the 108 and the 103, the Lacklash areas. So that means the freezers that were without power for four or five days are freezing the food that we no longer can eat and the fridges we probably can no longer use. However, I suspect when you open the door, if the power's still on, it'll be easier to get the stuff out, but it's going to be tough. Reentry requires safety checks. So Hydro, because they've turned the power back on, those communities have been through and checked the infrastructure and if it maintains with no more fires in there, then that infrastructure's been checked out. It requires Fortis, and they called us today to go in, they're looking for a plan. When can we go in, check our infrastructure? Tell us once to go in and check their infrastructure. We know the water systems are still running at 103 Lacklash and 108, but those are the types of things that have to be done before we let people in. Highways has to reassess the roads, do we have any problems? And those things will take time. How much time depends on whether we have more fires in these communities. So I'll take questions because you didn't really come to hear me talk. Tried to give you the short and sweet of it because that's what I prefer to do. So if there's questions, I'd like to take them.
So what we'll do is, I want to go to MP Doherty and Mayor Council and then we'll come back for questions because we have a number of folks that are asking and wanting questions answered from CNC. Thank you. MP Doherty.
I first want to take a moment to say thank you to all of you for coming in. I want to say thank you to those that are either watching online or at the other reception centers as well. I am deeply heartened by the outpouring of support by our volunteers, by our community, by the city of Prince George, by Red Cross, by our Salvation Army, by the forest workers that are, that have left their own homes and in jeopardy, first responders in jeopardy. I understand at this point, I think we've even got some police officers that have lost their own property while they've been protecting some of our evacuees. It is, as I stand before you, I'm not only your Member of Parliament, as you look up that map, specifically in the Williams Lake and the Caribou area and the Chilcotin, our families have relatives in each and every corner of that. And indeed, my driveway is filled with cars from my family and my wife's family that have been evacuated from the Williams Lake area. And I do appreciate Al Richmond's comments when it is said that these alerts and these orders are not taken lightly. I just spent the day, I spent the last 24 hours trying to coax my mother out of her home that she went back into as they fled on Friday in Alert on Mission Road and was evacuated through flames, but she refuses to leave to come up because it's only an alert right now. And I've got my in-laws standing before me, but on behalf of my family, my entire family and those that are out in the Chilcotin, the gentleman that mentioned that we've got First Nations and some of our communities that have stayed behind, some of our ranchers that are staying behind and doing everything to protect their livestock and their property, those are our families as well too. So I stand here with you. I know we feel helpless, but I have to tell you that everything and every resource that can be thrown at these fires, that can be thrown at managing our evacuees, is being taken and being used. From the early time on Saturday morning when my phone started to ring about the fires in the Williams Lake area and in the 100 Mile area, I was on the phone with not only my colleague Kathy McLeod, MP Kathy McLeod, but also Minister Goodill's office in Ottawa as well as Minister Bennett's office in Ottawa. And I stay in constant contact, almost on an hourly basis, with both of their offices in terms of federal resources, when and if needed. This fire remains a provincially managed, these fires remain a provincially managed incident and I have to tell you, the incredible work that our provincial colleagues, our provincial government is doing is overwhelming as well too, that the work that they're These fires are unprecedented. I've talked to many people that are very, very good and very well-versed at evacuations, specifically out in the Chilcotin. And they said that the matter, the minutes, the sheer minutes that these fires are changing directions and in overcoming property and overcoming areas is shocking. And I do ask for all of you that are evacuees to be, please be patient. Please know that everything is being done and used to be able to fight this and get you, get you home, get you safely home at the very earliest that we can. It is, it's amazing when we walk through the parking lots to talk to folks. And my message is always this, I'm glad you're here because you're safe, the air is clean. If there's anything you need, all you have to do is ask. And the people that are in the parking lots, and many of them I see here today, say, "We don't even need to ask. People are coming by and just offering it." And today at the volunteer signup center at Civic Center, I think over 1,000 volunteers, 1,000 more volunteers came out from Prince George and the communities around us to be able to offer their support. I know of evacuees from Williams Lake that came up themselves evacuees and they've immediately started volunteering to try and do whatever they can to lift up in our friends and our family. And to that, I say thank you. I'm going to end with this and just only say, you know, we are only days into this, day six as we know, and as we heard earlier, this could go on for weeks and indeed, the alert could be, we could be fighting some of these fires all summer. It is tinder dry, we all know that. And there are things that we can predict and there are things that we can't predict. As we move forward, we move forward as communities and we move forward as a region. And I have to tell you that I have full confidence in everybody that is managing this today. And I just want to say from my family, as the MP, but also from a family that has a number of evacuees and folks that are fighting these fires, thank you to all of those that are here. Thank you.
Okay, thanks Todd. And Mitch is going to come up and say a few words and then we're going to get right back into questions and we'll get some answers for folks.
God, I wish I was that tall. I'll reiterate, I've had a hell of a time. I've had about 20 hours sleep in eight days, about six. I do this and then I get going again, so I'm usually pretty good. The Attorney General said he sent RCMP up and I'll tell you, we've got a task force up there that's second to none. We've got guys, we've had some BNEs, we've had some looting, but very little, and I'm saying very little. And let's face it, they're not going anywhere with it. They're catching them on the roads, they're catching them everywhere. We're a pretty rural community, our outside community's pretty rural and they're catching them out there. You've got to realize, some places, we haven't got houses for, you know, 10 miles between each house and they're still catching these guys. So this is a crack shot team. I've never seen, well, I've only seen this mound here once before. We've got an RCMP task force in our community that's absolutely second to none. But I'm going to get into, I'm going to do this very quickly. On Thursday, I better get the right date here and I believe it's the 7th. No, it was the 6th. I got a phone call from my fire department saying we have a fire and we're working on it. We called in bombers and that's good. I go to work and I drive truck for a living, so I worked that night, but my phone never stopped ringing and I got back home at about 2:00 in the morning. Fire's still going, they're fighting. Thursday, we had put out the alert. Friday, I should say, we had to put out the alert. Not feeling very good and you, when you ask if it's easy to put this out, no. Saturday, the fire doubles. Sunday, the fire doubles almost again. Sunday at about 2:00, we had a meeting in our community. Things are safe, but we really pushed the fact, be prepared. Get your stuff ready. Get it in the car. Don't wait. Sunday night, forestry runs, not walks, runs into my office. We have to move. 8:47, and I won't forget that date. This is normal for me. I am an emotional person. But I'll never forget, 8:47 on the 9th, I had to push the button. But I got to say, we were ready. 45 minutes later, everybody in my community had a notice and the door has been knocked on. Hour and a half later, after the 45 minutes, everybody was out of my community, well, pretty well, except for some of them, and I'm going to say scumbags. And then we had a few people that we had issues drinking, what have you. The RCMP came to me and they said that this was not even textbook because they don't have a textbook that could deal with it the way it happened. And when I say we had a team, we had a team of people, volunteers, but my community, my residents were part of that team. They were ready, they got out and we had virtually no problems. Now, for the first seven days, six days of this fire, we had 0% containment. Not a good thing, not a good feeling. It's not what I wanted to wake up to every 5:30 in the morning and go to bed at 2:00 in the morning. Yesterday, we had 15%. Now that don't sound like a lot, but to us, it's a heck of a lot better than zero. And I just got a notice, we're at 20%. We had a great day today. Now don't let that confuse you with, things are okay. We got a monster out there, we're dealing with a monster, but we're at 20% and we're looking positive. I got firefighters that just haven't given up. How could I give up? This is the first time I've been away from my community since last Thursday and it's a tough day for me to be here, but I thought I needed to. But I'll be going back and we're not going to leave, we're not going anywhere. And I've got a neighbor here that, and Little Al is my neighbor, he's, his community is my neighbor. The worst of it is, he spent three nights in my house through this fire. But you know, it's pretty good when you wake up in the morning and you've got a house that's completely empty because we live in the evacuated area. But I got a friend sitting here and we get to talk. I got someone to talk to that understands exactly what we're going through. He went through it before I did. He had to push the button and I'll tell you, that is the worst thing we have to do. And don't ever take it, we don't ever take it lightly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much Mitch and thanks very much to everyone. And I know that we're probably going to need to get Mark and Karen back up here. So are there any questions here or from CNC? Councilor Merrick, have we heard anything from CNC? Okay, great. Mark, can I call you and Karen back up because I think it's probably the crux of the questions will come to you. CNC has about 50 people in it, I'm told, this evening at the lecture hall. Also want to mention, we have Red Cross representatives here tonight, so if you have questions, they can ask after the end of the event.
I just wanted to do a clarification on the Cottonwood House area fire. You can see from the map up there, it is the fire that says 765 and it's at 24 hectares. It's actually down one of the Forest Service roads around the 1300 Road. So I just want to clarify that it's not Cottonwood House, it's just in the area and vicinity, just so there's no confusion. Also, just want to mention that we did bring some handouts here for the people that are here. Make sure you pick them up, we've got some maps there for you if you want to take a look at them.
And I'll just add to what Karen said is that as she was talking, I was looking at, we were, we were challenged to get up here in time to do this. As she was talking, I was looking at that map and thinking, man, that's, that's not really jiving with what we're giving for our updates. So we'll try and do a better job next time in getting the maps up to date as well as the information we're giving you. So that's that Tautree, Tautree Rosita complex. That was one we were calling the Maccah Fire before.
So Mark and Karen, this isn't so much, I think, a forestry question, but I'll run it by you and maybe somebody else can answer if you can, but there's someone in an evacuation order area and is refusing to leave. This person would like to know if there is a place they can inform the authorities. Somebody's refusing to leave an evacuation ordered area and these people are concerned about that person. They want to contact somebody that's in a position of authority and I'm assuming the RCMP. Good assumption, do you think Al? Okay, so the EOC, Emergency Operations Command, Mike, would that, that would work? Okay, so from, from whoever asked the question to the EOC, if you want to come up later, if you're here or down at CNC, we can get you that number and then they can pass it on to the authorities.
So that said, unless they're a minor, in all likelihood, we would have them sign a form, maybe ask for a DNA swab and say, "We won't be back." So we won't force you out necessarily, unless there was some other medical reason that we needed to do that, we'd ask the RCMP to do that. But no, when the government, provincial government reviewed those statutes, only what, eight months ago we did all that? Six months? They elected not to go that far. So people can still stay in and be silly.
Next question from CNC, how long before we can return to Williams Lake? I think I'll, I'll give that to Mark because there's probably a little bit of, some questioning here around fires as well and what's happening there.
Well, actually, if you live in Williams Lake itself, there's nothing saying you can't return to Williams Lake, other than the fact that the highway is presently closed from Quinell south.
Good, you're good? Yeah, it is true. Yeah, it is true.
So you have to remember returning to Williams Lake. The air here, you can breathe, the air in Williams Lake's not good to breathe. You also have to remember, in Williams Lake, you don't have a hospital anymore, you have an emergency room. You have to remember that Safeway and Overway to your open. You have to remember that Walmart's closed, Canadian Tire's closed. You can't get a haircut, I tried to get one today. You know, I tried to get an oil change in my car today, because you can't get one of those because they're closed. So really, realistically, while you could go home, and we, I negated to say, we've had a lot of concern from people from Toseko, they can't get to work. And so we'll be opening up our office in Quinell and staffing it up to issue permits so people can get to work through that stoppage at Curzly tomorrow. So we will be having more capacity in the office, we will be issuing permits in Quinell. But really, if you're just trying to go home to Williams Lake, if something happens in Williams Lake this weekend, you'll just become another body that has to be moved out. So I would suggest, if you're here in Prince George, the air's clean, the people are friendly, and you have healthcare. So you're really going to add to the burden that the folks there are feeling. And 100 mile, the hospital's closed. 100 mile Savon's closed. Supervale's closed, you can't get in. So it may sound great to go home, but realistically, you're probably better off where you are. Thanks.
Yeah, it's good to know that while it's just an alert, you're massively back.
Oh, yes, certainly, there's been a lot of tactical work going on with the city of Williams Lake, and ourselves, and the RCMP, and the other forces that are there to organize that. So it is organized, yeah.
Al, can I just clarify something else? You said that if you were, if your house was in the 108 or in the 150, and it had burned down, you had been notified, is that the 108 and the 150 proper, or does that also include ranch properties, et cetera, in the area?
Ranch properties where?
In the 108.
If you're in the 108, some of it is 1,100, 1,400 properties, 760 homes. If you didn't hear from me, that's good. If you're up at Tat Road, Abel Lake, Lily Pad Lake, there's losses up there.
Al, you need to come to this because we've got people at CNC.
I'm sorry. So if you live on the 108 proper, 1,160 homes, 1,400 properties, and you didn't hear from me, your home's safe. If you live at the 150, and you didn't hear from me today, that's a good thing, your home is safe. The 103 mile area, we are in the process of doing inventory, but to our knowledge, there's been no structural loss, but we have to do that inventory. With respect to 105 mile, largely Abel Lake Road and Lily Pad Lake Road in that area, there are properties that have been lost. But we can't get in safely to do the inventory, and we will not guesstimate whether or not there's been a loss. We don't believe, I don't want to make phone calls, I'm going to tell them the house is gone, or the house is there, oh, I won't follow you, the house is there. I don't want to make that mistake. Even with the due diligence we did today, I had one call, where fortunately, it was the same family, but they had the address wrong. All the people did that checking for me, because I didn't walk the property. I probably will walk the property next time. Anyway, it was fine.
I have one more question. Yesterday, when I talked to the fire information officer, she said there's still a lot of unburnt areas, at least within the Gustavston fire perimeter. Are there any homes in that area that are still at risk right now?
I'm going to turn that over to Mark, if he can answer that.
You know, I'm not aware of any homes that are within the fire perimeter, and really, if there were, we wouldn't probably, well, we would not get that information out without notifying the people first.
I'm not sure who made the comment, maybe it was you, Mark, or Al. This person would like clarification on the several weeks comment made about the alert being in place.
Yeah, I think that was me. And I made that based on the facts that we have, such a dry forest right now. We've got major fires burning, and those fires are burning in proximity to Williams Lake. It's going to take some time for us to get them under control. So that's why I expect that that alert will remain in place for some time.
Question here, yes?
Is there any homes in the Wildwood?
I'll just get you to use the microphone, please.
How many homes in the Wildwood area has been burnt? Has any been destroyed? Okay, good.
So Al's response is none that he knows of.
That's excellent, because I live there.
Thank you. So we're just waiting on Councilor Merrick, I think she's got another couple of questions. I just want to give you an update from our perspective here in Prince George. And our EOC team, we're nearing, if not surpass, 6,000 registrations. That's a tremendous increase from this morning at our EOC meeting. About 1,200 of those are children. We have now probably 400 to 500 people using our evacuation accommodation here and down at the College of New Caledonia. Our numbers continue to grow from a registration perspective, and continue to grow from a lodging outside of these two locations. People either staying in hotels, people staying in RVs with friends, family. So our numbers haven't started to plateau yet. We anticipate more tomorrow, and the crux of the evacuees are coming from Williams Lake, and they're doing that as a voluntary thing. And I think it's been mentioned a couple of times, both by Al and Mark, that the weather conditions, the air quality, is what's causing them to make that decision to come north. I don't think we have any more, Councilor Merrick, we're good. So with that, as I said earlier, we're going to stay and answer a few questions. We have, I think Steve is still here from Northern Health, Red Cross, John is here, Karen is here, Al, Mitch, Mark, so feel free to come on down. We have people here from our EOC as well, if you have specific questions directly about how we're dealing with the evacuation, folks that are here, we'll be more than pleased to answer those questions. We have, I know, some media here that probably want to chat with folks. Thank you very much, everyone, for being here. We'll probably have another one of these in a couple of days, and greatly appreciate you being here, and I hope this was of some use this evening. Thank you.[1786.01][1786.01]